It being just before seven ten, let's open the Kingston zoning board of appeals for May first, 2024. Can I get a motion to open?
Open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. First on the agenda, we're going to hear Summer Street.
Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200 on Wednesday, February 7th at 7:05. Applicant Summer Hill Limited Partnership located at 160 Summer Street must seek a variance from the zoning board of appeals per section 10.4. B, power subsection number three of the Kingston zoning bylaw in order to install signage in excess of the allowances for size and numbers of signs as described in zoning bylaw section 9.4. D, proposed parking and building changes planned by associated engineers of Plymouth. We opened this, so we had continued it at the last time that we heard it, right?
Uh, yes.
So it's already open?
Very good. Take it away.
Do you want to close the doors, please? I know he's vacuuming up there, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you guys have all the updated paperwork?
Uh, yes. Bring us up to speed.
Yep. So, um, the letter that I submitted to whom it may concern, DIA Properties is looking for a variance to increase the size of the main large pylon sign because some of the storefront spaces have been split into more than one space and more areas needed on the sign for the incoming tenants. So there is no space on the pylon for new incoming tenants. That's why we want to add the four spaces.
Uh, did you, um...
And I resubmitted the plot plan showing where the pylon sign was.
Right. So, pylon two, do you have a permit for pylon two?
Um, so I went through seventeen folders three times and I could not find the original permit.
So did you go down to the billing department and find if there was a permit hold?
That's where I went.
So there's nothing there?
Nope. And the other sign that was out front, um, the temporary sign that they had out there, the wooden sign, they took down.
Which one is two?
Um, two is the one, they have to have a permitted on that. I'm not sure. I don't have it in hand and I could not find it in any of the folders.
One was the ice cream shop and the other one's the availability.
The what?
Availability?
Availability is still up. The ice cream shop one is down.
Okay. So we have a, we have a double problem here. You guys are asking for a variance on a sign that already has, that is full, and you already have a sign that doesn't have a variance and is already up. So I don't know, Jason's here. Do they have to resubmit to try to, this seems backwards. There's a sign here that's not supposed to be here, but they're only requesting on the sign that is allowed to be there.
Good evening, Jason Silva, in this context, building and zoning commissioner. So in, um, in the variance request, we're looking at it per parcel, you know, if you look at the allowance for this allocation per parcel, and, um, that's the, you know, request is to increase the signage. The signage that's not been permitted is not permitted. I just haven't taken enforcement action. This board chooses to take enforcement action, we would, but we, you know, we try to, um, try to help businesses. So in, but in this case, I explained to them that they're already in overages as far as the allowances and signage and obviously the non-permitted issues. In spite of that, they're here asking for relief.
Um, I guess would your better option be to withdraw this and come forward to ask for a variance on the sign that it's not supposed to be there?
Okay.
Or your other option would be to carry forward with what you got there and cut down the sign you got already in the ground?
For the second pylon?
Second, so the second pylon has no permit, isn't supposed to be there.
Okay. So we, we didn't originally put those signs up, so I understand that.
It doesn't, I know it's not affecting your business and you personally.
Yeah.
I'm saying for the, since you're representing the applicant, I'm talking of as you, as the applicant.
Yep.
So you're, you're representing, uh, DIA Property Management. I'm guessing that's the building owner.
Yep.
Um, that's their two options. I don't know if you're the person who can make this decision for the two options.
No, I would have to let them know.
So, I can pull the board. Currently, pylon two has no permit.
Okay.
This board could take action to say, get, remove the, remove it, have Jason make you remove the, the sign, and then you can come forward. You either ask to have the sign put back, or you can continue to ask the sign to have four more spaces on it.
Okay.
Um, or you can come back in front of us and ask for a variance for the sign that's already in the ground and see if it makes it through that way. In other words, you got, you have a problem here. I don't know how to fix it for you. Um, not you.
No, I know.
Not your company.
Yep.
Um, DIA Property Management, they have a problem.
Yep.
They need to figure it out probably sooner than later.
Okay.
Now that it's been brought to our, basically, the public's attention.
Okay. I can let them know tomorrow and see what they want to do.
Point of order, I mean, it seems like the notice says they're seeking a variance to install signage in excess of the allowances for size and numbers of signs. So they have two signs, um, one of which is permitted, and you want to put, you want to, I guess, increase the size of that. And the other one is unpermitted and they're seeking to make it right. They're seeking a variance to put that there.
Well, they didn't put, they didn't do that until we brought it to their attention.
But it says in the notice that's what they're seeking.
All right.
I don't know. I mean, that says to me that's what they're seeking.
So they, so in other words, I guess, I guess if you, if you want to take that action, they're asking to double their signage.
I think you could read this notice.
Yeah, you could take it as broad, as very broad.
Is interpreting that broadly. Now, maybe they're surprised by that and would like a continuance, but maybe they're prepared to go forward. I don't know.
That's, that's the option I'm putting to her as a representative of DIA.
But I don't think it has to be re-noticed. I think it just has to be continued.
I'll pull the board.
Again, that's...
I, I have no problem. I'm just, again, I'm just bringing it up to them because in theory, you don't have a permit for the number two.
Right.
I get what she's saying. You're asking, you guys asked broadly for, but when you guys gave us all the facts of, of that broad statement of words, you only showed us four pieces of sign at the bottom of this sign.
Correct.
So that's the, basically, the description I would take from your, your initial thing. You didn't add the second sign until we told you to put on paper all the signage on it.
That's not in the packet, right?
Hmm?
The second sign isn't in here.
That's my point.
Yeah. So they said signs, plural, but it's not in here.
Because they weren't, they didn't think pylon number two, they thought that was already permitted and allowed. They just wanted to add on to the big sign. But in theory, they're adding the square footage of the second pylon in there. I guess you would say, if you took it broadly, what they're asking for.
Okay.
So I can pull, I can pull the board anyway, either way, or ask her if you want to continue it or try to re-circle the wagon.
Can we just continue it and I'll find out what they want to do?
If that's, that's a smarter idea, to be honest. Um, we're obviously not against the commercial stuff in this town, but we got to make it right for everybody.
I understand.
So, um, I'll pull the board. You guys have a continuance or?
Yeah, I, I'd say just continue it. I mean, we don't want to hurt the businesses there. We don't want to open up a can of worms that somebody else could do something. So I'd say continue.
Yeah. And then just prepare too. Just because you guys are finding out ways to cut these, not you, but the business owners, able to basically cut these bays that were originally probably meant to have only eight bays in there.
Yep.
Now they cut it to sixteen. If Stop and Shop believes, can they cut it to forty-five?
Right.
And then say, you know, now we have forty-five businesses, we got to be able to put a sign up for every single one because we can cut it seventy-five different ways now.
Yep.
Um, I, that's a slippery slope for me. I, I just, you know, you're allowed, you're allowed your spaces. I understand you want to get a sign in everywhere, but what you're allowed is what you're allowed sometimes. So just keep that in mind.
Okay.
Oh, that's my, my point. Doug?
I'm all for them continuing.
Yeah, same.
Marsha?
If they want to continue, I'm, no objections.
Very good.
So all, everyone continue?
Yeah, I say they want to, so it's up to them. When, when, when do we have space?
When do we have space?
October.
May fifteenth, uh, May fifteenth, we have Wapping Road, Three Grandview, One Landing.
One Landing's new.
June fifth, we have thirty-three Cushman and River View.
What's left of that?
June nineteenth is a holiday, and we go into July, the third is a holiday. So the seventeenth.
Do you want to try to be shoehorned in to the second, the first June, June fifth?
What's the next one?
The next one?
June fifth?
May fifteenth, but we have Wapping Road, Three Grandview, and One Landing.
So you'd be number four, Fiddle.
That's fine. I'll do that.
Fiddle. She'll be here anyways.
You'll be here late.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were here late.
I know, right?
There's two forty Bs there.
That's all good. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, what time is that at? What time is that at? Seven twenty?
Um, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen. Make a motion to continue 160 Summer Street to seven fifteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up. Lane, take it away. It's going to be the continuance, so the Mae Ave. There it is. That's ready to view. Thank you.
On remand from the Housing Appeals Committee, a public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200 on Zoom, while it's in person, on Wednesday, May first, 2024, at 7:10 PM to hear the petition of Thomas Drummond, Manager of River View Properties LLC, 67 Cushing, Cushing Drive, Duxbury, Mass., to request a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, to allow construction of twelve units, including three affordable units located off Mae Ave and Post Court, Kingston, Mass. I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Um, wait, one, two, three, four, five. Who's that on that?
I shouldn't, can I?
You can't second.
I can't do it. Just five of you?
Um, there you go. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good.
Is that Lainey having?
What date are you going to push to? The fifth?
That is June fifth.
June fifth at seven oh five or seven?
Let's see. Seven oh five.
I'll make a motion to continue this to June fifth at seven oh five PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. He two are recusing yourself?
Uh, yes.
On the next one. Mo, you guys, read that one.
You guys have a good night.
Have a good night.
See ya.
Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200, on Wednesday, March sixth, 2024, at seven oh five. Applicant Fred Tonsberg, sixty country club way, half seventy-five, lot four, seeks a special permit from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.2 table of use Kingston zoning bylaw, page thirty-three, in order to construct a maintenance building for the existing country club. Site plan for proposed maintenance building at Indian Pond Country Club, Inc., prepared by Joseph Webby Jr. and Richard Bedenadectus of Webby Engineering Associates, Inc., dated seven eleven, 2023, retaining wall location and note plan Civil Connections LLC, Gilminton, New Hampshire, dated eleven twenty-nine, 2023. I make a motion to open the hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anyone speaking for again, so then we got some paperwork that came in at the eleventh hour. Um, anything new?
Well, I guess in first item, and my name is John Fleming. I'm the attorney representing Indian Pond Country Club. At the conclusion of the last meeting, you had asked whether or not we would agree to a peer review of the drainage plan?
I didn't ask if you would have agreed to it. I said, pick a peer review.
Okay. Well, we have, we have a different memory. So I, we've, we communicated our choice.
Okay. That's all I need. I need, all I need is money in the kitty and I needed a peer review, and then I'm going to have to have peer review look at it, and then we'll have, sit down with peer review and you guys and hash it back with the engineers to make sure the numbers are correct. Sort of like having two lawyers hash out, but two engineers.
So the, the, the choice that we communicated is, is going to be the peer review?
Yeah. What'd you pick?
We picked, um, PGB Engineering.
Deb, did you get a check from them to put in the kitty?
Didn't.
So no check, so we're going to need money for the peer review.
Okay.
Um, wow, simple number, I guess five?
Five thousand.
Probably five thousand.
I just received five thousand for another peer review.
Yeah, yeah. So probably that. It's not our money, so it just sits there until the job's done. All right. We'll contact them. Anything new to update?
The three items that were, that were specifically referenced at the last meeting were, um, the submission from, or the submission by the sewer commission about the right to connect to town sewer was a little unclear or vague. So we communicated with the sewer commission, and there has been a second letter submitted that says, not only are we permitted, we're required to connect to the sewer commission.
As long as it's in there.
So that, that one was good. Uh, we communicated with the water commissioners as whether or not we're going to be able to connect to town water, and that communication came in, the response came in fairly recently, and the response is no. The moratorium will be applied to this project. So that means specifically with respect to the sprinkler system, we have to find another way to supply the water and adequate pressure for the sprinkler system. According to, um, our conversation with Yankee Sprinkler, they're confident that it can be done with at least one alternative being a well, and they have done this in other circumstances. But here's where we come to the sort of the, in my mind, sort of the, the catch twenty-two we find ourselves in, and that is that Yankee Sprinkler is telling us that they need to know where the building would be located and the basic, you know, the, the, the equipment that would be allowed on each of the floors for them to be able to design the system. And the fire chief says, before he can review, when he give a sign off, he needs a detail, a more detailed plan. And we understand that, and we would understand that eventually we're going to have to submit the plan, the sprinkler plan, and get the approval from the fire chief. But until we know where it's going to be, because now where it's going to be becomes more important because we can't connect to the town water, and we got to figure out what's the alternative source.
So you guys are looking for a new site? Is that what you're saying on the property?
No. We're just, we're, we're going to probably, we have a, someone coming in to do an analysis on putting a well in on this Saturday. Um, and hopefully that will provide the source of water and the pressure that's needed for the type of system that we want to, we want to install. Um, so that's really both. The water commissioner said no, and the fire department said we don't have enough by way of, uh, information. And so what you received recently is what we just asked for after really finding out that we couldn't connect with the water. We, we posed a very specific question to, to Yankee Sprinkler, and that is, um, can this be done under the applicable code? And the answer is yes.
Did you happen to bring your, um, the covenant for the area with you guys? I didn't, I didn't receive one. I know, I requested one.
The, the declaration of covenants and easements for the entire subdivision?
Yeah, for, yeah, around it. I mean, you're trying to put a, basically, you're trying to put a building up in the area that we have covenants. I know you guys created a covenants for the properties around the golf course, correct?
We put a covenant on that it basically applies to all the lots.
And we apply, correct?
And reserves the right to...
Yeah. So I just want to see the covenant. When you get a chance, send that over. I think I requested it the last one.
I think they did.
You have it?
I believe they, yeah, yeah, and all their stuff. Yes, I do.
Water, no. Another question I have, um, just myself. By putting this, I put this building here, I guess I, what I'm trying to figure out here is, the building, the country club building has a ratio of parking spots that have to be used for what it was originally intended to be. Am I correct? So by putting that building there, are you jeopardizing parking spots that would be required to be basically positioned to the country club?
None of the parking spaces in that parking lot on that side of the, of the country club will be impacted by this building. It's going on the golf course property itself, not the parking lot.
So not, so not, you're getting, so if I put, so if I condition that?
The answer is we're increasing the parking. Yeah, but there's, we're going to, there are, I think, twenty-two paved parking spaces on the other side of the road? No.
Well, I guess, I guess in theory, would there be, or I shouldn't say would there, there would be a, a condition that, that, anything that pertains with that building to not basically screw up the parking that is allowed by country club?
I understand.
Sure. It makes sense to you. Does it not?
The plans that were submitted, the building that we're looking to put up is on the golf course.
I understand the building is, but I'm...
The parking, the parking, in order to put that building in the way we, the way it's been submitted, we're actually increasing parking because we're taking out some, some earth that is already there existing, and that will add probably five or six more on, on the, uh, looking at the building on the right-hand side of parking spaces.
So that would be dedicated parking, say, for employees or...
Whoever.
Basically, employees for that.
Whoever. It's park, yeah.
And then no, no construction equipment would be parked anywhere on that pavement?
That's correct.
So that would be some of the conditions.
Yeah. The, the construction equipment, once we get approval, or if we get approval, that is going to be out of sight. You won't be seeing it.
All right. Just making sure because it seems to be a parking issue up there. Um, Marsha, I'll let you go if you have any questions. Leaving, Doug?
Oh, jeez. Um, hmm, where to begin? Um, when the special permit was granted to High Pines Corporation and to Mr. Tonsberg in nineteen ninety-seven, did you meet the parking requirements set by the town at that time for the four-hundred-seat function facility and the two-hundred-seat resident, restaurant that you have?
I believe we did.
You did?
Far exceeded.
Pardon?
Far exceeded.
You exceeded then?
Yeah.
Um, and will, and you have not increased your function facility or restaurant size since then?
No, no.
Has your membership in the country club increased since then?
Not enough.
Well, everybody would say that, but practically speaking, zero increase in membership?
No, we keep our membership at, at pretty much, it's three hundred.
Is that by your own choice?
By, by design.
By design?
It's a private club, and if you put three, any more than that, it puts a burden on the people that are members.
Um, now, there's currently road work or some work going on, uh, along the side of Country Club Way. Is that, are you doing that work?
Absolutely not.
Is that the work being done by the town?
The town sewer department and the town.
To, to dig up and install the treated effluent lines?
They've got, they're, they have improved the wastewater treatment plant, so now they've decided they need a new...
No, that's just a yes or no. Is that what the town is doing? They're, they're installing treated effluent lines through private roads in your sub, in the Indian Pond subdivision? Excuse me?
He asked if you said two new.
No, not two. Treated effluent lines through your subdivision. That's what's happening right now, correct?
And they're cutting down a lot of trees, uh, on the parcel adjacent to the road. Kind of destroying the whole property up there.
Are you taking action against the town to prohibit the town from doing that?
We filed a motion, a complaint, and a motion for preliminary injunction, which was denied today.
Okay. So, and, but your PI was denied, your preliminary injunction or TRO?
No, it was PI.
A PI. But you still have a complaint against the town regarding that work?
Yes.
Okay. And so there's litigation pending between you, right now, the, uh, the Indian, what is it called? The Indian Pond Country Club?
And the neighbors.
And the neighbors. Um, you say that, you know?
The neighbors are pretty upset over.
I mean, they're upset, but are they plaintiffs in the litigation?
They are, they are not as of this point plaintiffs in the case.
So that's a real misrepresentation, Mr. Tonsberg. If the, if there are no residents of Indian Pond Estates that are plaintiffs in that lawsuit, you know, they may be upset with what's going on.
Not a present, yeah. Within probably the next week.
Again, please don't speak for people other than yourself.
Okay. Within the next week.
Please. In these proceedings, I think it's best that you speak only for yourself. Um, and that has to do with the private roads in Indian Pond Estates. Is that correct?
It has to do with whether the town has two things that we claim. We claim they don't have the right to use the roads to go over a piece of par, a piece of property, namely, one dash thirteen, which we convey to the town to reach the Davis property.
Again.
It's a basic, it's a basic rule of easement law for over a hundred and fifty years.
I don't want to get into that. I'm just trying to, just to keep it short. You know, maybe yes or, I'll try to phrase my question so that you can answer them yes or no without them being...
That's, that's difficult to get me to do.
Okay. I, I have been here before. Um, so I'm just trying to understand, Indian Pond Country Club objects to the town using Country Club Way for installing the, what was it? The effluent lines. Is that yes or no? You object to that?
We object to them.
Okay.
We do.
Yes. And your objection has taken the form of a lawsuit brought by Indian Pond's Country Club against the town of Kingston.
Absolutely not.
No.
High Pines Corporation, the developer of the subdivision, owns the roads.
So it, the, the, Indian Pond Country Club has nothing to do with the roads?
Correct.
Now, how would people get to the Indian Pond Country Club if it weren't, they weren't allowed to travel over those roads?
They have the same rights as every single residential unit owner in the subdivision, which is to use the private roads for purposes of accessing the property.
Now, speaking of rights, do you recall a summary judgment action that a decision was handed down in December of 2022? Do you recall that? Where it was a High Pines motion for summary judgment regarding the condition of the roadways in Indian Pond's Estates. Do you recall that?
I recall the case, and I recall the summary judgment.
And you recall that you were denied, your petition for summary judgment was denied, and the town's was allowed, correct?
Sort of.
Uh, well, I have the entry.
Do you have the entry that, that we're compelled to do the road?
No, but my next question is you, you have appealed that ruling.
Correct.
Compelling you to do what you promised to do regarding, you being High Pines Corporation, regarding the roads in Indian Pond Estates. You have appealed that judicial determination.
Well, I, I disagree with your characterization of what, what the court ordered.
Okay. Well, let's just put that aside for the moment.
The court ordered us to have our engineer meet with the town's engineer.
Okay. Let's put that aside for the moment. Let's not bicker about the legal. But there was a lawsuit involving High Pines Corporation's obligations regarding the roadways in Indian Pond's estate between Indian Pond, between High Pines Corporation and the town of Kingston, correct?
Correct.
And that was in, and there was a summary judgment decision rendered in December of 2022 on competing motions for summary judgment.
Correct.
And the, you have, you, being High Pines Corporation, has appealed that summary judgment decision?
Yes.
You, so, and the town did not, so one could infer from that that the decision was favorable to the town and unfavorable to High Pines, but that's an editorial comment. My next question is, what is the status of that appeal?
We filed our brief and town filed their brief on, I believe, April twenty-second.
Of twenty twenty-
Of this year.
Of twenty twenty-four? So if I'm to understand correctly, there are two pieces of pending litigation involving High Pines Corporation and Indian Pond Country Club's, Country Club, right, pending, right now in court.
Neither case involves Indian Pond Country-
Okay, they're both involve High Pines Corporation.
Only High Pines Corp.
But they, does Indian Pond Country Club have an agreement with High Pines Corporation other than just being an owner of land in the subdivision, you know, to use its roadways?
In other words, does the country club pay to use the-
I mean, is there any payment, it just seems like a disparate, you know, like-
It's a private road, so it has to be maintained by somebody, so would the country club be paying, like, if they had to snowplow the roads, is the country club paying to snowplow the roads and not the town?
Well, the town is plowing the roads, so.
Yeah, and the town wants to use the road to-
But the town at one time threatened to not plow the roads in Indian Pond Estate.
The town has made a lot of threats over the course of the year.
But I'm saying, again, that the residents, according to the Indian Pond covenants, don't have to plow the roads, they don't have to maintain the roads. Uh, so who, where is the responsibility for the excess wear and tear caused by the four-hundred-seat catering facility and the two-hundred-seat restaurant on the roadways leading into the Country Club? How, how is that dispersed? You say you have the same rights, High Pines Corporation, Indian Pond Country Club, has the same rights as, you know, John and Jane Doe, who own House A in the subdivision, to use those roads?
Absolutely.
Okay, you don't have any greater rights because you put a greater burden on them? Would you, you don't have-
No.
You don't have any greater responsibility?
I don't think under the Declaration of Covenants and Easements, responsibilities were assigned with respect to the-
I, I would agree, but would you agree as a practical matter that the Indian Pond Country Club puts a much greater burden on the infrastructure and the road, in particular Country Club Way, than the residents, you know, who maybe drive in, drive in, you know, out in the morning and in at the end of the day?
It's not that simple, I mean, the, the, the portion of the road from Brook Street to the Country Club, I would probably agree with you that, yes, that's the portion of the road that's used by the Country, by the Country Club. The Country Club does not use the rest of Country Club Way, the entire two miles that goes around the golf course, that's used basically exclusively by residents and contractors, the people doing work on the lawns and that type of thing, so that loop, there's, there's no increased burden by the, by the Country Club.
Are all of the roads in the entire Indian Pond subdivision, are all of those roads private?
All the roads?
All of the roads.
You mean, in Indian Pond, one, two, and three?
Phase one, two, three, and now we're talking about phase-
No, they're all public.
Well, phase four is in public, is in phase four, the-
Phase four is not a public one.
Right, so that of all of the roads in Indian Pond Estates, the only private road remaining is Country Club Way?
Correct.
That, okay. And does High Pines Corporation still own lots four dash three-three, four dash three-five, and four dash three-six?
If those are the lots at the very entrance to the, to the subdivision, yes, and they're under covenant with the planning board, the planning board won't let us sell.
Have you had an offer for purchase on any of them that has-
No, we've asked, we've asked the planning board to release them so that we could consider selling them, and the answer is no.
Well, I mean, you could offer them for sale, subject, and then when you had a sale, come to the town and say, okay, they're gonna pay us this much money, and work out some kind of an arrangement with the town.
We've made a lot of offers over the time to the town to-
So the answer to that is no, you have not offered them for sale, you, they're just assets of-
That'd be bad business to offer them for sale when it's, they're still under covenant.
I know they're under covenant, they were, they've been under covenant for quite some time. Are they assets of High Pines Corporation or Indian Pond Country Club?
High Pines Corporation.
And what would your estimate of the fair market value of those three lots, what would that be?
I think one of them has some wetlands issues, so it would be less than the others. This is, this is an amateur educa, uneducated-
Your guesstimate, I'll call it a guesstimate then.
Yeah, it is a guesstimate, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Each?
My client seems to be disagreeing with me.
Okay, I, I withdraw that question, um. Does the current maintenance facility have public water?
It has water, it does not have a sprinkler system.
I, but it has a, it has a public water supply, correct?
Yes.
And the location, the current location of the maintenance facility used by the Country Club, that was chosen by the Indian Pond's Country Club, correct? Do you not know, Mr. Fleming?
I've been, you're talking about something that was done twenty-four years ago, so if, if you'll allow me to think, um, then I'll try to answer the question.
There would just be a yes or no?
What's the question?
The current location of the Indian Pond Country Club's maintenance facility, was that chosen by Indian Pond Country Club?
With all due respect to you, the answer to that question is, I don't know.
Good, just one, I just wanna-
That's fine, we'll always circle back to. That's up to you a little bit earlier.
That is all I have for now, so thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
I'd like to see the original plans that the planning board approved for the maintenance building that is there now, and the square footage of that, and what their, their decision, their final decision was back then? When, before that was built, or in the process?
We've submitted to you the site plan approval from two thousand, which authorized the construction of a maintenance building. I believe the location of the maintenance building as actually built is in a slightly different location from as approved, but the location was approved by the building inspector at the time, was of the opinion that this was just a change in location of something that had been specially permitted and therefore didn't require anything more, and he issued a building permit.
Well, my question is, was there any special, um-
I think we have the building permit, if you'd like to see that.
Okay, but, but as far as any, did, did the board make any special requirements, decisions on that? Do we have any, any, um, in the final decision?
I, I think Mr. Down has noted the documentation relating to the prior approval of special permits is a little bit light.
Right, and that permit was issued in two thousand and one, correct?
I don't remember, I think it was before that.
According to the application for a building permit that I had, it's dated July three, two thousand and one, um, the owner of the property was the High Pines Corporation, and the applicant was Fred Tonsberg, and, and so it's your testimony that that was the-
He was asking about the special permit, I think, and you're talking about the building-
I thought he was asking about the maintenance building.
Yes.
The final decision, right, right. And the building permit says fire alarm system as required by fire department, your original permit application, High Pines Corporation.
More, Marcia?
And Indian Pond Country Club was in existence, was formed in nineteen ninety-eight, correct?
I do not remember.
Oh, okay. No, not right now.
Yeah, you, I believe I submitted the, the information relating to the corporations and all the dates.
Kevin, carry on.
Um, that was all my questions for right now.
Bob? Seems like what we're asking for right now is the water for the sprinklers and how you're gonna get it, let's deal with that first. Uh, location and the original zoning for the Vegas building, it's, you should be able to find that on the original permit.
Bob, your mic's on.
Excuse me, uh, the water for the sprinklers, let's, let's deal with that first, that seems to be the thing that we're talking about first. If we can get water to the sprinklers, get a design for the fire alarm, and have the fire department sign off on that, step one. I think the location and the original zoning permit should be easily found through some of the original permits, um-
It's in the site plan that we've submitted.
I, I, I understand, I, I saw it a while back and I don't quite recall it, and- the disagreements and complaints that, that are ongoing with the residents and Indian Pond management, with the roads, and everything else, has nothing to do, as far as I'm concerned, with the zoning. I, I think that we, that's, that's a discussion for them and somebody else, not, not us. So let, let's deal with the water, and I, I think that we should be able to figure out where the original, um, maintenance facility was, and, let's, let's get it done, just my opinion.
Right, um, Marcia, anything more for us, any public, or anything new?
I, I wanna know the status of this, this pending litigation between High Pines Corporation and the town of Kingston, and I have, I have to respectfully disagree with my colleague on the board, I think that is certainly relevant, um, to the application that's before us on for permission to put up a, 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 a new building.
Between different entities.
Um, you know, that's a legal issue, and again, I just wanna know what the status is, and, um, I think it's relevant to this board's ability to grant-
Decision came down this afternoon.
A special permit.
I think you said that decision was-
I, I'd like you to provide the, the board with, I, as a member of the board, I'd like a copy of, um, your appeal, both appeals.
Appeal? Now I'm confused, are you talking about-
There's the appeal of the December twenty twenty-two and your briefs, or I'll ask, I can, forget that, I'll ask town council.
I can get it to you tomorrow.
And then this thing that you just recently filed.
Do you have an email address that we can electronically send it to you?
Send it to- You can send it to you.
You can send it to Deb.
Sure, it's from you, thank you.
But do you, do you want, I thought your question was, what's the status of the case with the town over, over the roads and the-
I-
I think you want both.
I do want both, there are two cases.
So what would you like with respect to the preliminary injunction materials, the briefs from both parties?
The complaint, your, the plaintiff's complaint, whatever you allege in your complaint, I know your motion for preliminary injunction has been denied, but whatever you allege, are alleging, that the town does or doesn't have the authority to do.
That's fine. Again, should I send it to Deb?
Yes, please.
Well, I, I have one other thing, I, I do agree with all the neighbors up there that because of the road issues, if you're looking to put a new building up, traffic concerns, people coming in and out, it's, uh, it's all got to do with the road and the, repairs in the road, you know, traffic and fire protection, everything else getting up there, everybody uses the road, along with snowplowing, it's the same thing, um, so it's, it's, you know, you're still asking for a new building, so you gotta take all those factors into consideration, or you said it doesn't agree with any, and I disagree with that.
Fair enough.
I would just urge the board to understand that there is a difference between High Pines Corporation and Indian Pond Country Club.
I, I, I understand that, but it's, it's still from pulling out of the same hat.
That has nothing to do with it either, again, it's, it's zoning, it's the zoning board of appeals, I don't care who owns it, let's zone what it's for.
Who is, you're here on behalf of, of the Indian Pond Country Club?
Correct.
And, um, you also represent High Pines Corporation?
I have represented High Pines Corporation, correct?
Well, do you represent High Pines Corporation in the pending litigation that, regarding the use of Country Club Way?
Which pending litigation?
That you just filed?
Okay, the one that was just filed?
Yes.
Yes.
You represent High Pines?
I do.
Okay, and that's about the roadways, correct, Country Club Way, it's about Country Club Way?
Correct.
Uh, and, uh, the Indian Pond's Country Club is not a party to that litigation?
It is not.
Okay. I believe that giving you, giving Indian Pond Country Clubs a permit, um, to build a new maintenance facility, based upon what I know so far, you've got a maintenance facility, it's got water, it's serving the needs of your golf course, I think it will adversely affect the neighborhood, and for that reason, I, I, I'm opposed to giving you a permit for it, until, uh, we make more headway on the neighborhood's concerns about the state of Country Club Way, and putting more traffic on that, it's, it's not gonna help, and I don't think you've proven that the current proposed site is appropriate, since you don't have any water, and you need water, and you haven't presented us with any information regarding a well, so if you want, if it's voted on tonight for those two reasons, and maybe more as I study further, I, I can't support your request.
You are holding Indian Pond Country Club responsible for obligations that are owed by High Pines Corporation, and I think that's legally incorrect, and so you, if you wanted to deny the special permit based on a, on a erroneous legal principle-
Well, I guess you're right, we don't, we don't have to deny it, we can just condition it.
I'm going, I will vote to deny it, I don't know, you don't, I haven't heard what conditions you might have, but I don't know that they would-
I'm just saying you could put it as a condition.
And I happen to think that we would prevail in, in that legal argument, and I'm certain that if we deny it, and, and you will appeal and you will make that argument. And I'm certain that if we deny it, and you will appeal and you will make that argument. So, but you won't have your storage built. You won't have your maintenance facility. I think I'll be protecting the residents.
Thank you.
I think I'll protect the neighborhood.
Any more? So either way, moving forward, you picked an engineering company. P G B Engineering. Give money either way. It has to go through peer review if you want to continue moving forward. Yeah, obviously you're going to need water because you're going to need fire suppressants. So are you going to move forward with it? It still has to get peer review. Peer review has to see it. Peer review has to basically go through it, get it back to us. Your two engineers have to hash it out that it actually works, and then it comes in front of us. So that is part of the game moving forward. And anyone from the public has anything new to add? I'm not here to feed a dead horse. Go up, name, address, please.
Elizabeth Masterpolo, one oh three Pondview Drive. I would like to point out to the board that while Council for Indian Pond Country Club has stated that it's unfair to hold the Country Club liable for the legal responsibilities of High Pines, I'd like to point out that I have noted in the property records discharges related to properties in Indian Pond that are owned or have in the past been owned by High Pines Corporation that were used as collateral on the Country Club. So I think that if they are going to say it's not fair to hold the Country Club responsible for the legal obligations of High Pines, then why was High Pines willing to support the legal obligations of the Country Club? And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? New info? Hold on.
Good evening. George Egan, one thirty-one Country Club Way. Just again, touching on the point that the previous person just mentioned. If there's not a connection between High Pines Corp. and the Indian Pond Country Club, who are the employees that are patching the roads on Country Club Way when it's time for the road to be patched? Not just this last contract that was used, but I believe it's employees of Indian Pond Country Club that have consistently in the past been doing the patchwork on the roads. To me, that would indicate that it's the same company. I mean, we know it's the same company. This is smoke and mirrors. Everybody here knows it, and we're just playing this game. That because of the, because Indian Pond Country Club is its own entity and High Pines wants its own entity, one's not responsible for the other. But morally, we know that it's... Shake your head, you know it is. I don't know who you're lying to. It's clear. You know, and you know, my message to Mr. Tonsberg is be a man about it. I mean, this is real. This is not, it's not a...
You need to speak directly to the board, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not a surprise that it's the same owner, okay? So that's...
I'm going to point to order that you not to call liars in a public meeting.
No, I never mentioned be a liar. I mentioned...
You said I was a liar.
I said you shake your head. Okay, okay, so...
Maybe it's bluer.
Be civil.
So that's a first point, okay? Second point is if, as Mr. Mullen had said, it's a separate situation and it should be treated as a separate situation, let's address the separate situation. So if there's a building to be built, there's going to be construction vehicles that have to traverse the roads on Country Club Way for this work to be done. Is it not an obligation to the, and it's a private road, so is it not an obligation to Indian Pond Country Club to make sure that High Pines Corp. is, one, I guess reimbursed for the damage done to the road and High Pines Corp. is obligated to fix those, that damage? Is that not... I think that makes sense. Secondly, looking at the zoning bylaws for the town of Kingston, there's under permitting on ten point three, oh, where are we here? Ten point three point D, findings and determinations for permits. Prior to approving a site plan, this is the planning board that this is referring to, but it's an indication of stipulations by the town for a permit to be put forth. Prior to approving a site plan, the planning board shall make a finding and determination that the proposed development of the site, and there's a whole list, age through age, I'll touch on E, will not create adverse impacts on the public services and facilities serving the development. F, in addition, will not create an adverse impact for residential developments and recreational facilities. My feeling is this is going to create an adverse impact on the residential development of this building. It's a steel building that is not consistent with what we're seeing on the edge of Country Club Way currently. So there's a... Where the planning, where the planning board or zoning enforcement officer determines that one or more of the following objectives are applicable to an application for a site plan review, proposed use, the board or Z E O, based on who is conducting the review and taking final action, shall make a finding and determination that the following objections will be met. A, the proposed development will not present a demonstrable adverse impact on the surrounding area resulting from, I, excessive noise, level of illumination, glare, dust, smoke, or vibration, which are higher than levels now experienced from uses permitted in that area. Well, we're going to add, I'm assuming parking lot lighting or additional lighting there. There will be noise there, so there's a point there. Buildings are located harmoniously with the landform vegetation or other natural features of the site and advantageously for views from the building while minimizing the intrusion on views from other buildings. This is directly across from the Stonecroft Building, so it's in clear view. The natural character and appearance of the town is, this is, these objectives shall be met. The natural character and appearance of the town is enhanced. I don't think it's enhancing anything. It should be, the building should be minimized by screening views of the development from nearby streets, single-family neighborhoods, or town properties by the effective use of existing landforms or alterations thereto such as berms and by existing vegetation or supplemental planting. I haven't seen any plan for a screening or any planting screens to be put between the road and the building. This is all directly in, it has nothing to do with the roads. This is just for the building application. The scale, massing, and detailing of the buildings are compatible with those prevalent in the surrounding areas. I don't think that it's compatible nor prevalent with anything in the surrounding area what they're putting forth. Support facilities such as storage, refuse disposal, utility buildings, and structures for recreational vehicles activities are located in screens to form as effective a visual screen of them as possible. So these are all, these are all, these are all in the town bylaws. So we'll get off the road subject. Let's address these issues then. Okay, and that's all the points I have.
Have you guys thought about a different site that is less effectively in the front? Have you guys explored a different spot that is effectively not dead up front for a utility building?
Could you please go up to the mic? Could you please go up to the mic? Thank you.
I mean, not to be cynical and reversed, it seems like this would be taken away from your golf course by putting a maintenance building right up front.
Well, first of all, the reference to it being a concrete building is it's concrete underneath, but it's going to have a facade on it.
I think you said metal buildings, but who said concrete?
It's going to have a facade on it, like to try to fit in with the Country Club.
Yeah, I'm just saying, having your basically, it's like having the kitchen and the eating area, you know what I mean? You keep that to the back or to the rear, to the side, or somewhere hidden, you know, hidden in plain view, you know? I'm asking if you've explored it. That's what I always simply ask, if you've explored it.
We really have not explored it.
To me, this seems like you're taking the easiest road. This is the easiest route. Not, you're doing the easiest route, not the route that's probably best for the Country Club itself. I'm just asking if you've explored it.
I'm not aware of there being a place on the Country Club.
I don't know. I'm just...
Would be a feasible place for us to construct something. Would have to severely damage the golf course itself to put it somewhere away from the street.
All right, I was just asking. Simply asking. Anyone else?
I'll be very brief with my comments that are new, I might add.
It's a lot of paperwork for being brief.
To the first point, Mr. Chair, you had referenced at the beginning of the hearing, parking increased. And I understand the applicant has indicated that the building's not going to impact the parking lot. The issue, I think, really is that from the last hearing, when I was before you, I had demonstrated that the current location with the maintenance building has a lot of parking all over the lot, both in the front, they have equipment in the back. And of course, I'm not sure they've accounted for the parking in the current lot. And I mention that because the original, I believe, permit, which I think is important to have for the record, which I think is in, I think they submitted it, but originally was for about a twenty-five thousand square foot building. Subsequent to that, they then applied through the building permit for a larger thirty-six thousand, I think it was thirty-six five hundred, thirty-six thousand five hundred. Again, presumably what that did was it accounted for that excess parking that they talked about. I do think parking is important because bottom line is, when that facility is being used at peak times, I'm not sure there's going to be adequate parking for their employees because they haven't included that.
What do you guys use for enforcement for any parking that's outside of your... So what does High Pines use for enforcement of parking on the roads from the Country Club when it's in the roads? I'm saying, what do you use for enforcement when people do park on the roads? So I'm sure that High Pines must have some sort of enforcement ability if someone from the Country Club parks on the road.
Use the microphone, please.
So I guess if you're forcing no problem the town to get off your roads, what do you do? Do you put injunctions on people who park on the road?
For instance, today, when the trucks were up there, when the police officer from Carver was there, the enforcement. The other day, when Officer Petraeus was up there, that would probably be the enforcement we use.
So you're going to use that enforcement going forward on all cars parked on the road?
No, I'm not going to enforce anybody for parking on the roads.
Just, you're going to pick and choose?
Why would I?
You're going to pick and choose as you feel?
Well, there's two hundred and fifty homes up there. I don't know of anybody that parks on the roads.
I'm saying if the Country Club does...
The Country Club does not park on any cars on the roads.
So then who would, but who wouldn't enforce it if they did?
Well, we, the Country Club would probably, would probably ask, but we've never in twenty years, we've never in twenty years, you know, had more cars...
Then why do I get email after email that that's happening?
If you get those emails, you should probably give them to us because we would take care of it. There's absolutely no reason for anybody...
I think there's some big weddings up there that have people parking on the road.
I'm just wondering if High Pines forces their roads equally in both ways. Because I know, I get emails. It's not like I love having hundreds of emails of pictures of cars parking on the road.
If you let us know when you get those emails, we would take care of it.
Do I send it to High Pines Corp. or do I send it to Indian Pond?
If Indian Pond Country Club's people are parking on your road, Indian Club, Country Club will take care of it.
All right, so parking on our roads.
That doesn't make any sense. According to Mr. Fleming, we're holding Indian Pond Country, Indian Pond Country Club responsible for High Pines Corporation's not living up to its obligations on the roads. But now you've just told us that if people park on those...
No, no, what I said was Indian Pond Country Club will enforce any cars that have been supposed to be parking on our lot. We'll take care of any car, but in twenty years, we haven't had one. I don't know. Have you known of any?
Well, according to the chairperson, he gets repeated telephone calls that people are parking on the road.
Any one of those emails that you get, we send them to us and we very gladly take care of them. I don't know of any person. We get very, very high marks up there, very high marks.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just...
This is becoming way off base.
My apologies. I never introduced myself to the board, Mr. Chairman. My name's Attorney John Dannyham. I'm here on behalf of the abutters directly across from the parking lot. That's Debbie and Peter Hooper who are actually in the back of the, on the side of the room. The second issue I wanted to address was the issue of the permitting, okay? Unfortunately, I did not make copies. I will send them and submit them to the board for your benefit. So what I'm saying, I can't, I will confirm it with the writing. I put a request in for public information about the permitting, okay, for the golf course. And in particular, the permitting is such that they originally had asked for a building permit and they received the building permit for the construction of both the shell of the facility, which is the clubhouse, and also at the time, I believe it is the maintenance or the location for the golf carts. Subsequent to that, they'd asked for another building permit a year later to build another barn, if you will. And the reason why I mention that is because then again, in two thousand and one, they again asked for a barn and maintenance building. And that's important. It's important for the board to understand. In just a minute, I'll tell why. The reason is, I think, a board member, Mr. Worthington, right, Worthington?
Rankton.
Right, I'm sorry. Had asked the question, which I had used before, and I'm not sure you were here, Mr. Rankton, was, what was the original plan or layout for the clubhouse? And I'm only raising it again, not to be redundant, but just so that you can understand what it is. And what originally was proposed was the clubhouse was to be placed here. And you can see Country Club Way coming in. And so the clubhouse is represented as pink, okay? What they represented, the planning board was, and this is the current parking lot right now, what they represented, the planning board was they were going to put a maintenance facility or barn for the carts in the parking lot that currently exists. That's what was approved. Then they went, they filed for a building permit, and that's what I'll submit with an explanation as to what the progression was of it. Instead of building the maintenance facility in this current location, this lot, they ended up putting it in the abutting lot where it is today. Again, valid, they got a building permit, it wasn't appealed. And again, it's important to understand it wasn't appealed because this was the original construction of really the project of Indian Pond. All the homes weren't going to be built at this point in time. Subsequent to it, they were. So the progression originally was the facility finally migrated to the parking lot, which is here with a little parking lot. They needed more parking, and so they moved that off to the other lot. That's where it is today. Now, the reason why I mention, I think the question was raised about, you know, could there be another location? And that's something that we've always referenced and talked about for the board to entertain. And if you haven't been there, if you do, there's the clubhouse. Behind the clubhouse, there is a driving range. Off to the left side of the driving range, there's a building, I think. I'm not sure whether, it's not a pump house, but it's just a building. And at the very end of the driving range, there happens to be another building there. That building was filed by the applicant, I believe it was High Pines at the time, to build a barn and a maintenance facility. And I am amazed at that because, you know, the facility they're proposing, I think they had mentioned at the last hearing, was it could actually be unders... And I mention that because, you know, the facility they're proposing, I think they had mentioned at the last hearing, was it could actually be undersized. One of the things in their application, or rather in their ar- architectural renderings, is that not, they wanted to be able to have golf carts or equipment to be able to come in and go out, which makes sense, come in, light, the tires remove out. Then they also wanna have sec, uh, access on the second floor, that's why they wanna put it into the hill, makes perfect sense.
Just if I, all these proposed buildings, were they permitted? Were they approved?
The per, uh, application that I, that I have was granted, and there was a building permit issue. I don't have any, uh, certificates of occupancy.
So if they were built, I'm assuming they were approved?
Yes, I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting they were not, that's it. I'm just saying that these were applied for and built.
To me, that's water under the bridge, they were approved.
Well, that's true, and, but the point, sir, is not whether they're approved or not, but what exactly are they? And why is it that they're not entertaining modifying, adding on to, exa, uh, expanding the current building they have? This is one side profile, that's the way you can enter from the side. Looks like it's a tiny facility, it's not, it's over twenty-four feet by thirty-six feet. Here's the side-
So it doesn't, it doesn't all conform to the permit that was approved?
I, I'm not sure whether it was conform, it certainly was, was-
So that's an issue, if that's the case, that's an issue.
Well, that's for them to, to at least tell us, because they're currently using it, the facility. So if they're using it, why can't they continue to use it? They're saying that they have no other option available. And so they're coming before your board asking permission, special permission, which you can deny, whether they meet the requirements or not, under the law. But they've created this hardship, and they're asking you for forgiveness to basically put it on the other side. When they already have a building that actually meets the requirements that they talked about, and they could add on to. And here's another profile of it, with all the bays that they have, just like they suggested. They could probably push this out further. And I think that's up to them to come to the board, and, you know, talking about water right now, they've already got a building at the other end, and somebody had mentioned about access with building it, they've already built it, they could augment it. Trucks have already been out there. Here's another profile, and finally, the final one.
Is that the building that, um, High Pines does not own?
This is directly on the golf course. So if High Pines sold it to Indian Pond, they sold the entire component of the golf course. I'm just gonna submit, I've got four of these five pictures I'd like to submit to the board as a part of the record, if I could. So, to, to your question, um, that building is up in this vicinity, right here, okay?
That's, that building's way out back, away from any residents?
Correct. It's on the back, and the reason why I think it's important is, they asked for this twenty years ago. They got it built. For whatever reason they're not doing, they're not exploring. Maybe there's an additional cost, I suspect so. But apparently, they're looking for a well, I would submit that they should consider a well up in that area, add the building, come back. It's, the one thing I just wanna make sure of is that, you know, my client's not against the project as a, as far as like what they need, the building, it's just not the right place. The last two comments I just wanted to, um, touch base on was, the last time I, they mentioned that they're gonna be having, um, working hours between fi, I think it was eight and five. And realistically, I know it's seasonal, like any seasonal business, it kind of, it, it slows down in November, and probably doesn't pick up until March or April. But, you know, when you're cutting the lawns, you're not gonna be cutting the lawns on the golf course while people are there. You get up early, you start the engines, you get the engines going. Yeah, you could probably get them prepped the night before, you still gotta start them, get them going. And, um, so they're gonna be getting up at four, four-thirty, five, gonna go out there, they gotta do the fairways, they gotta do the greens, they gotta go out and cut the holes for the greens, at some point, they're gonna have to use, uh, blowers. So, you know, realistically, it's not gonna be a eight in the morning. And finally, I get, I think the other thing is, the buffers, I know the gentleman mentioned about landscaping, I think it's important, you know, you look at these, what, what have they done so far, I mentioned the last time, uh, with the pictures that were submitted, um, I think it's gonna impact that parking lot. It's just, you know, um, it's the wrong location. And, and to, to the board, I would also finally say that, you know, um, you know, while your special, uh, your bylaws specifically state that, you know, um, you may grant a special permit, it's not shell. But importantly is, to understand is that, uh, case law, both at appeals and also at the land court, uh, have si, stood for the proposition that there is no absolute right for a special permit, and the granting of, of such is done at the discretion of you, the board. That case is Humble Oil and Refinery versus the Board of Appeals in Amherst. It is a nineteen-seventy-one case, which is old, but it has been cited subsequently, all the way up until twenty-twenty-one. And the, the reason I mention that is, it court quoted, uh, the court stated, "The mere fact that the standards set forth are complied with does not compel the granting of a special permit." And so I would submit to this board at this point, there is an alternative location, they have it, they should be exploring it. It's already half-built, if they wanna augment it, they could put everything in there, hide the equipment, nobody's gonna see it. You know, they only have to deal with the parking, and then getting up to the location. But clearly, they thought about it before, they built it, and they're just letting it sit there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Fleming, what is that building currently? No, what is it?
It'll be housing and equipment.
Just equipment?
And golf carts.
In addition to the maintenance building on Lot four-dash-one-oh-nine, so you have two maintenance buildings?
The ma, one of the main reasons for the new building is because it, the old building is inadequate.
Which old building?
The one, the one that we're using presently.
The one on Lot-
The one that, is one is on, the one, the maintenance building that's on the main street.
The one for which you got a permit?
Pardon?
The one for which you, Mr. Tonsberg, and High Pines Corporation got a permit?
The only maintenance building that I have.
That's on Country Club Way, correct?
It's on Country Club Way, on the main road, yes.
To the right of the, uh, the Country Club itself?
On eighty-four Country Club Way.
I don't know what the address is.
I'm just looking at your permit application, that you filed.
Well, I, that permit's twenty-some odd years old.
Why haven't you explored re, re, reusing that building? Why, why haven't you explored retreading that?
We do use this building, we use it every day of the week.
Okay, so-
Yeah.
Why haven't you explored-
But I'm glad somebody trust- cast on the property and took these pictures, because now I can use them. This little part here holds eighteen golf carts.
Yeah, but why haven't you explored retreading the spot you already have, and making it a facility that-
They won't fit.
The word retreading means redoing it to an, and then basically to the size you would properly need. Currently, you're still asking us for, for a site that's gonna be too small.
The reason for the golf carts, the eighty golf carts, we don't play golf on the middle of, of the other, the other side of the golf course. We play golf on the, from the first hole, which is from the parking lot. You come into the parking lot, you get your golf cart there, you go to the first hole, which is right there. This is halfway through the golf course. What, it's exactly what we're saying, we don't wanna be taking golf carts, they're taking two hours to get eighty golf carts out from halfway on the other side of the golf course. This is on the other side of the golf course, this building. This building houses the heavy equipment, there's four pieces of equipment in here that handle the, the, the backside of the golf course. The, uh, this other side, this side of the building here, if you look at, they have another photo, it shows some, uh, plastic units. If we, i, if it, if we're getting fertilized, we try to put it out the following day, uh, until we get it. If we don't get it, we, we'll try to house it inside this, 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 uh, part of the barn, for one day. The, the plastic containers that you see outside that other pool are returnables. Right? So they're there for one day, uh, and they're out of there. The ma, the main reason for, for the, for the facility, uh, where it is, it's, it's easy accessibility for the patrons and, and the people to set those golf carts up.
But it's just for the golf carts, I mean, your argument is just-
That's fifty percent of the building.
I'm saying your, I guess your argument is, the golf carts is your main argument for the front building. But you, my point is, is that back building, I don't know why you haven't explored to make that building a-
I don't need to, I don't need to-
A proper facility for all your cutting stuff, all your big equipment, everything you wanna store in there. And you have it far enough away from any human being, if it were to burn down, it would just, it burns down and no one gets hurt, it's just in the middle of nowhere. I just, I don't know why you haven't explored it, it seems- That you're willing to cut it off your nose despite your face, it just seems, it seems odd to me. Anybody else, quickly? Go ahead, will you? I didn't realize that building was there.
Hi, I'm Deborah Larkozza, three-seven-two, Country Club Way. Just to kind of dovetail on the point that the last person at the podium had mentioned. So we're looking here, they're coming for a, um, to be able to build this building. And we already know that they have other buildings that could be alternatives. So they build a building, it doesn't meet their need, they come, they build another building, doesn't meet their need. So now, we're gonna build another building. And at what point does, at what point do we keep giving special permissions to build buildings that are then, like, I don't wanna say discarded, 'cause it sounds like they're being used, but at what point do we just keep having them get special permissions to build buildings, even though they're doing the permitting like they're supposed to? I guess the point is, um, there's a lot there, from what the pictures look like, that, that's a, a big facility. I don't know why, and I understand, it's not convenient. But if it's not convenient, that wasn't, that wasn't the zoning committee's choice of where to put it. It was a person who built it's choice. So it's like, it's like there's always a reason to have to come before here and get permission to build something else because it's not convenient, or it, you know, it doesn't meet their needs. I guess my only point is, it seems to me that you've got a building, you don't want to expand it because it's not convenient for you, and it's cheaper to do the other way, I'm assuming. Because you're not gonna have to tear up the golf course, and you don't have to spend the extra gas to get the golf court, carts back and forth. So I would say, to me, that is not, not enough of a reason to grant, allowing them to build this, where they're proposing to build it at. It seems to me it would make the most sense to say, you already have permitted buildings, they're big, they're adequate, you could expand on those, instead of continuing to just grant more and more building permits. That's all I have.
Thank you. Can I ask the applicant a question, just to follow up on what the speaker said regarding, uh, who owns this, the, the building that's depicted on the, uh, the poster board? That's owned by Indian Pond Country Clubs. But the maintenance building for which you actually have a building, and, and, I'll strike that, let me go back. And Indian Pond Country Club applied for and received a permit from the town to build the, the structure that's depicted on the- Did you? Again. I, I, we don't, you can't answer that. Could you provide us with information regarding who, whether that structure, and I'm sorry, I'm just, just for the record, does this have an address? Is, that we could refer to it, I'm, it's, it's, the record's just gonna be horrible.
No, it doesn't have an address.
Probably the back maintenance building.
A back maintenance building. Uh, but you don't know if you actually applied for a permit and were granted a permit for that?
I think we're pretty sure it was approved by the building inspector.
You're pretty sure? Can you produce a bill, can you produce anything?
All I'm strong is, yes.
You know, would you mind? Because I think that goes right to the heart of the issue of whether you are entitled to another special permit to build yet a third building, when you have two existing buildings that might meet your needs with, with modifications.
We don't, we don't have two existing buildings.
Well, you do, you have a lease on-
I have a lease, we have a lease that expires in a year.
Building that you decided to apply for. I mean, I know it's not titled by, it's owned by High, uh, High Pines Corp?
No, it's owned by, it's up by EBF, which is controlled by Fred, Fred W. Tonsberg-
But I'd be curious to know.
Who has served us with eviction notices to kick us out of-
Again, I'm sorry, but you digress. Could you just provide me with, whether you've got a permit for, um, your back maintenance building?
Well, we'll try.
I appreciate that.
But most, up till now, we've been supplying the town with most of the, the permits and the special permit applications.
You're the one that's asking for something from the town, so it seems like a fair bargain, in my opinion.
Well, I respectfully disagree.
Anyone else, new information? Very good, that being said, we need to make a motion to continue. Pretty cool, the next couple, looks like, well, in that last date round, you told me, it's, didn't sound good until, what, late July, early August?
Yeah, I would say-
And to be perfectly honest,
Oh, I guess it would be better.
Until we have peer review, look at whatever you're asking for, and get back, and go back and forth. From what I know before, it isn't, it isn't a two-week process, it isn't a month process, it usually takes a while.
We have either July seventeenth or August seventh is open.
August seventh seem easier? July seventeen, is it open?
Seven o'clock.
So once you send money over, we'll contact them. Perfectly honest, until we get the okay from them, might not be instantaneous.
So we're, are we going to continue this?
Yes.
We didn't have a motion?
No, no, but I'm just telling them, so what happens sometimes is, we've had engineering companies say, "Oh, yes, we'll do it, we'll do it." And then all of a sudden, they back out last second, 'cause they don't wanna do it. So, Marsha, well, that's four. And you only have four board members voting, so you're gonna need to unanimous, um, going forward. That being said, anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this to July seventeenth.
Yeah.
At seven.
At seven PM.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Very good, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
You don't wanna continue it?
Nope. Just, it's time to take action, man.
No matter, we only, we only need three for the whole. Very good.
Are we continuing, or?
Yeah, I don't need a super majority for that, I just need a simple majority. Okay, it moves. Yep.
August, August?
July, July seventeenth. Thank you, everyone. Marsha, can I steal your covenant?
Oh, you can have, yeah, you can take it.
I can barely read it.
I read it, it's very hard to read.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm gonna have to get out my, uh-
It has nothing to do with running a country club.
I'm gonna have to do my trifocals.
Yeah.
I, I don't, well, I don't think it has anything to do with the country club at all.
It has nothing to do with it.
I think it has to do with the houses around it.
Has to do with housing.
Yeah, yeah, but-
You know, how many square feet your house has to be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to see if there's pieces in there. How you doing? Good. Everybody's good, just same-o, same-o.
I brought a bunch of them, that's for you in a minute. Okay, no.
Yeah. Oh, crap, we adjourned. Marsha, 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 sorry. Hey, guys, what's going on? We're still live.
Hey, you're live. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I'll vote for you.
All right, so make a motion.
I love where you adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, everyone, goodbye.